Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Day, Melody and Morse's Stadium, Antay, Colorado. The acronym is ANPAC, I am the Chief Judge of Consular Court. Today is Class 38. Class 38. What did we learn in Class 37? Well, the bottom line is this: We started learning that Moors who want to play political chess can't even compete if they don't have a chess board. What did we learn about the word "chess board"? Well, the board is what you call the E-state, the empire. Moors are trying to enforce the empire. But the Moors don't understand, you need an empire state. When the Moors don't have an empire state, then you can't even compete in what they call "politics." In the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, we started learning about the word "politics." When we started studying the Charter of the United Nations, we started learning about the word "politics." Especially in the Charter of the United Nations, Article 73 specifically keeps talking about politics. Charter of the United Nations for the Rights of Indigenous Peoples talks about politics, and it points out to you the word "state." So what are we learning? If the Moors don't understand how to play within the rules, the organized rules of the state based upon the empire state, then we'll never get our states back. That's the truth. So what am I talking about? Moors have to start to understand it was called "enlight manner." What does "enlight manner" mean? Anytime you're playing politics, the first thing you have to put on the table when you're dealing with another state based upon the diversity of your state, you have to put all your material facts on the record, such as your Circle 7 State of Pass. So what's happening? And we learned in Class 37, what's happening? The United States of America is checking boxes as it relates to international law, representing norms of international law. What's happening? This is the Moors over here, and this is the United States of America. The United States is checking boxes. So what's happening? Statehood, we're talking statehood. The United States of America saying they have a constitution based upon their jurisdiction. They're checking boxes. They're saying they got three branches of government, they got state flag, state seal, allegiance that's signed, and what? What else? Tacit acquiescence or plain or acquiescence. Capitulation. So the foreigners come over and sign allegiance, and everybody else claiming that they were born on the soil of the United States of America automatically just comes under acquiescence of allegiance. So the add can be capitulation, the add can be acquiescence, tacit acquiescence. That's the add. Okay? Moors never consented by signing anything to say we'd be citizens of the United States of America. But on the acquiescence, we're acting like we're citizens of the United States of America. Why? Because we haven't gotten back to statehood. So what's happening? This is the Moors here. Can Moors seriously say, seriously say, that we've checked these boxes the same way the United States of America's done? Can Moors say we've checked the box and said we have a constitution that outlines our latitude longitude of a state? Can we say we have three branches of government, elected officials that have a term limit, Consular Court, of elected judges? Can we say that we have a state flag? State flag, this is the E-state flag. Can we say we have a state flag for each one of the states based upon the jurisdiction? Can we realistically say that we have allegiance that's signed? Do we consent back to a Moroccan government? What's consent back? It can't be your mere expression. It must be signed in order to get back into your statehood, because we were colonized. Now you have to have a material fact to prove that you consented back to a Moroccan government, i.e. a state. Can Moors say they've acceded to the treaties, conventions, declarations, United Nations Charter, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? Can we realistically check these boxes through statehood? If the answer is no, then guess what? We're stateless. The United States of America, even though we keep staring there de facto, guess what? Have you ever looked up the definition of de facto government? It means you're a government, even though you may be de facto, but you're checking boxes nonetheless. What makes them de facto government? What makes the United States of America de facto government? What makes them de facto?
They're a corporation.
They're a corporation. They're no longer the republic. That's what makes them de facto. Okay, let's talk about Moors. Do we have de facto governments? Yes. Do we have a handful of the de jure governments? Yes. But are all those governments working through a state and can check these boxes based upon these basic fundamentals? There's a high probability that the answer is no. Moors have to be honest with ourselves. So how are we ever going to compete at the game of chess, political chess, fifth dimensional chess, when we don't have things of light manner? This is light manner. Can Moors check these boxes the same way the United States of America's doing on the United States? Because United States corporations still are checking these boxes, they're still having elections, et cetera. Even though they're municipal corporations, they're still going through the theatrics. Have Moors at least done that? There's a high probability the answer is no. Public inauguration, et cetera. Public inauguration, et cetera. We have to be honest with ourselves, Moors. We're delaying our own justice. So today, we'll keep talking about politics, which is the game of chess. What is chess all about? The treasury, the chest. The treasury is really what? The land and the people. The colonists are maintaining extraterritorial jurisdiction and compulsory jurisdiction and subject matter jurisdiction and per solum jurisdiction, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, over the land and the people. So the Moors have to make a decision. Are we going to enforce the empire state? Or are we just going to stay back here talking about the empire? Because guess what? All other nations around planet Earth on this side of the board, playing by the rules. Moors want to enforce their sovereignty, then your sovereignty comes through the state. And once you have a state, now you can get into the game. Now you're playing in light manner. Without the state, you can't even compete. Everything come out of your mouth is what you call arbitrary and capricious. That's the truth, Moors. We sent adamant jurisdiction court warranto questioning the colonists, and guess what? We should be questioning ourselves first. Moors need to understand they need to put this constitution down. The constitution of the United States of America, Moors can't enforce it. You need to put this down for now and check these boxes about yourself. Put yourself in check before you start trying to put the United States of America in check. Are we in check? Do we have our status correct? If you can't check these boxes, then you need to work on yourself. Noah Drali said he gave you everything to save a nation. Take it. Save yourself. Have we done that, Moors? Because the directions are clear. Listen to me. The United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, the United Nations, which at this time, I believe, is 195 member states, put this together. They gave more specific instructions, such as Article 4. Let's go to Article 4. Okay, Article 4. Mother, could you read that for me, please?
Article 4. Indigenous Peoples in exercising their right to self-determination have the right to autonomy of self or self-government in matters relating to their internal and local affairs as well as ways and means for financing their autonomous functions.
Thank you, Mother. Okay, what's happening? The United Nations and the nations around the world, i.e. the states around the world, they say, hey, Moors, here's your instructions. What's the instructions, Moors? Moors! In exercising their right to self-determination, you want self-determination, Moors? Okay, this is what you have to do. Have the right to autonomy of self-government. Okay, how do you define government? Here's how you define government. But they're not going to spell out everything to us, Moors. They say y'all got to be competent and understand you need these basics to even have what's called full powers. If you understand self-government, and you're looking for autonomy, which is a disconnection from the colonists, then what do you need to have? Says they're internal. What's internal? That's your state. Your state is internal. That's your local politics based upon your state is internal. And local affairs as well as ways and means for financing their autonomous functions. Look what Article 5 says. Indigenous Peoples and Moors have the right to maintain and strengthen their distinct politics. What does distinct mean? You got to be able to prove it. That's what makes it distinct. You go from this, the empire, to distinct state. Isn't this more distinct than this? This is distinct. Empire state, but Moors right now just got empire. We'll never move forward just talking about the empire. You must now add the state, empire state. It must be distinct. What does distinct mean? Your constitution outlines your latitude longitude. The constitution is an emanating document. That's distinct. Can Moors say they have a constitution, latitude longitude, three branches of government, state flag? State seal? Do we have a seal, Moors?
Yes.
Yes.
ANPAC has a seal? We're talking more about that today. The bottom line is this, Moors, based upon Class 37 is, Moors got to start checking boxes. If we don't check these boxes, we're considered incompetent, and we're not qualified or authorized to even talk about politics. That's the truth. If you're watching the video, Moors got to start understanding international laws that relates to the ICJ. If Moors are not studying international law, that means you're not serious about getting your sovereignty back, because you're only going to get it through the state. There are no shortcuts. Moors cannot enforce treaties, Moors cannot enforce constitutions, Moors cannot enforce declarations, Moors cannot enforce conventions unless you accede to them through your state. Your sovereign rights as a Moore is defined through a state. That's the truth. That's Keith's thing. Okay, this video is called, "What is the International Court of Justice? The Role and Activities of the ICJ." All right? This was in, this video was shot around the year 2016, okay? So let's kick back, learn a little bit about this.
When states disagree on where their border is. When states contest islands or a maritime zone. When one state considers that another has violated a treaty or other rule of international law. And when the UN or one of its agencies needs an opinion on an legal issue, they can turn The International Court of Justice, or ICJ, has its seat in the Netherlands at the Peace Palace in The Hague. Like the General Assembly and the Security Council, the Court is what's known as a principal organ of the United Nations and is the only one not to have its seat in New York. The ICJ is the principal judicial organ of the UN and the world's highest international The Court has existed since 1946. Its two official languages are English and French. Its founding document, the statute, is an integral part of the Charter of the United Nations. All UN member states therefore automatically recognize the existence of the Court and can call on its services. The ICJ is the successor of another court created in 1922 by the League of Nations, the Permanent Court of International Justice. Between 1922 and 1940, the Permanent Court handled around 60 cases. It was dissolved after the Second World War. The ICJ succeeded the Permanent Court on the 18th of April, 1946, inheriting not only its statute, but also its jurisprudence and traditions. Like its predecessor, the International Court of Justice has two roles. The first is to decide disputes between states. These are known as contentious cases. The Court's second role is to respond to legal questions submitted to it by the General Assembly, the Security Council, and other UN organs or agencies. These cases are known as advisory proceedings. Since the Court was established, it's dealt with a large number of cases. The ICJ is not a criminal court. It does not try individuals. Only disputes between states can be submitted to it. The Court consists of 15 judges. They're elected for nine years by the General Assembly and the Security Council. Five posts are renewed every three years. Judges may be re-elected. Mr. Mohammed Benuna, Mr. James Richard Crawford, Ms. Joan E. Donoghue, Mr. Kirill Kavalkian, and Mr. Patrick Lipton Robinson have been elected to the International Court of Justice for a term of office of nine years beginning on 6 February 2. The members of the Court must all be from a different country. They do not represent them.
Moors, they're home. Did they say the judges were self-appointed? Or did they say they were elected?
Elected.
What does that mean, Moors? They're talking government, they're talking politics. You can't be self-appointed, nothing. Even the judges of ICJ are elected. Moors can't go around saying they're the Minister of Foreign Affairs. Moors can't say they're the Pharaoh and the Sultan and the King and the Empress, they can't say they're the Castle General. You can say these things if you've checked these boxes through your government. What's my point? The ICJ won't accept anything that the Moors petition to the ICJ if we're self-appointed. We must work through the states, because state means your competent authority was elected, and those competent authority titles, those officers, then appoint other officers of the state. It's very important to understand, elected. Let's continue.
I solemnly declare that I will perform my duties and exercise my powers as judge honorably, faithfully, impartially, and conscientiously.
The composition of the Court reflects the following geographical balance. Three seats on the bench are occupied by African judges. Two seats are occupied by judges from Latin America and the Caribbean. Three are occupied by Asian judges. Five by judges from Western Europe and other Western states. And two by judges from Eastern Europe. Although no country is entitled to a seat, in practice, the Court has always included one judge from each of the five permanent members of the Security Council. If the Court does not have a judge of the nationality of the states, parties to a particular case, those states can each choose what's known as a judge ad hoc. These judges can be of any nationality and have exactly the same rights and duties as elected judges. Every three years, the Court elects its president and vice president. The president chairs all sittings of the Court. He or she directs its work and supervises its administration. Each year, the president presents a report on the activities of the ICJ to the General Assembly in New York. The Court is administratively independent. It's the only principal organ of the United Nations that is not assisted by the UN Secretariat. The judges are assisted by a registrar elected by the Court for a renewable term of seven years. The registrar is the head of the Court's Secretariat, its registry, whose staff members are recruited from all over the world. The registrar performs judicial, diplomatic, and administrative functions. The Court's first role is to judge legal disputes between states. These contentious cases represent 80% of its work. In the past, contentious cases have often related to border disputes, maritime delimitation, and diplomatic protection. But they also increasingly concern issues such as humanitarian law, environmental law, the use of armed force, and the responsibility of states. The Court's jurisdiction is general. It may consider any issue of international law. All UN member states are entitled to bring contentious proceedings before the Court. Other non-member states can also access the Court subject to certain conditions. The Court's jurisdiction thus extends throughout the world. Since 1946, a large number of states have appeared before the ICJ in contentious proceedings. States are sovereign. They're free to choose how to resolve their disputes. The Court can therefore only hear a case if the states involved have freely consented to having the case referred to it. In most instances, states appear before the Court on the basis of an international treaty. Once the Court has been seized, the proceedings take place in two phases. First, the states submit their arguments, evidence, and submissions in writing. Then their representatives and lawyers deliver oral arguments before the Court during hearings.
Costa Rica requests the Court to dismiss all Nicaragua's claims in this procedure.
Nicaragua requests from the Court to, A, dismiss and reject the requests and submissions of the Republic of Costa Rica.
The Court then withdraws to begin its deliberation. Its deliberations are confidential. All questions are decided by a majority of the judges present. On average, the Court's deliberations last between four and six months. Each judgment is delivered in the Court's two official languages and reproduced in several sealed copies, one of which is sent to each of the states concerned. Judgments are run out at a public sitting. They conclude with an operative part in which the Court gives its decision in respect of each of the points at issue.
For these reasons, the Court, one, by 14 votes to two, rejects the preliminary objection
All judgments of the Court are final and without appeal. It is to be noted that by coming before the Court of their own volition, states at the same time assume a commitment to comply with its decisions, all of which are binding on the parties. Virtually all the judgments of the Court have been implemented. If a state refuses to abide by a decision of the Court, the opposing state may have recourse to the Security Council, which may, under Article 94 of the Charter of the United Nations, make recommendations or decide upon measures to be taken to give effect to the judgment. Given the great legal, moral, and diplomatic authority with which decisions of the Court are invested, it is however extremely rare for these to happen.
The Court's second role is to respond to any legal questions put to it by certain UN organs and agencies. This procedure culminates in advisory opinions. Since 1946, the Court has rendered a number of opinions on questions which have sometimes received wide media coverage. The majority of these opinions have been requested by the General Assembly. The advisory opinion issued by the Court in 2004 on the legal consequences of the construction of a wall in the occupied Palestinian territory was one of the most high-profile in its history. States from across the globe were invited to participate in the proceedings, which lasted just under seven months.
The General Assembly and the Security Council should consider what further action is required to bring to an end...
Unlike judgments, advisory opinions given by the Court are not binding per se. It is for the United Nations' organs or specialized agencies, having requested an opinion, to follow up on them as they see fit. Whatever the case, thanks to the Court's legal and moral authority, its opinions carry great weight. Moreover, the consideration given to the Court's advisory opinions by states and international organizations in their legal practice fosters the development of international law.
Continuing the work started by the Permanent Court of International Justice in 1922, the ICJ's decisions have significance which goes beyond just the states and organizations directly involved in the cases. On very many occasions and on all continents, the Court has helped to defuse crises, to normalize relations between states, and to restart deadlock negotiations, either through the settlement of disputes by judicial means or by stating the law in respect of a particular As the principal judicial organ of the United Nations, the Court is an important cog in the international mechanism for promoting and keeping peace. To that end, the Court very regularly hosts visits by heads of state and dignitaries.
The Court performs its functions with great efficiency. It can make an urgent order in a matter of days or weeks and give an advisory opinion within a few months. It settles the large majority of the highly complex contentious cases submitted to it in under five years. The Court's budget accounts for less than 1% of the regular budget of the United Nations. The Court is a judicial institution unique in the world. Through its judgments, opinions, and orders, it lends its support to the United Nations
elle donne son soutien aux Nations Unies dans la réalisation de leurs objectifs primaires qui sont de maintenir et renforcer la paix et la sécurité internationales. Bien sûr, la Cour ne peut pas par elle-même empêcher les États de se résoudre à force, mais reconnue par tous les membres des Nations Unies, elle sert maintenant plus que jamais comme un instrument invaluable pour promouvoir la paix qui est à leur disposition.
All right. Quel était le but de nous apprendre un peu sur l'ICJ? Voici le but. Vous voyez, quand les Moors commencent à vérifier ces boîtes, spécialement cette boîte, quand vous allez à ces boîtes, toutes ces boîtes, toutes ces boîtes sont pertinentes. Juste pour le but d'exemple, je vérifie cette seule boîte. Pourquoi? Trois branches de gouvernement. Quelle est l'une des branches du gouvernement? Branches judiciales. Cour d'administration. Quand le Cour d'administration prend un jugement, et les États-Unis d'Amérique, ou les États-Unis, ou l'un de leurs nombreux États, est toujours usurpant le Cour d'administration et ne suivant pas ce jugement, cet ordre ou cette opinion, ça signifie que cet État d'État, en tous les cas, est violant des ordres, jugements et opinions du Cour d'administration. À ce moment-là, maintenant, les Moors de leurs Moors-États peuvent maintenant amener ce problème contentious à l'ICJ. Mais nous ne pouvons jamais amener ce problème contentious d'in dispute d'État sur État à l'ICJ jusqu'à ce que nous aions un État. Et puis, une fois que nous avons un État, nous devons avoir un dispute. Si le Cour d'administration ne previent pas cette dispute grâce à l'ordre, le jugement et l'opinion envoyés par le Cour d'administration, alors qu'est-ce qu'il faut faire maintenant? Maintenant, vous devez amener un référé, qui est la Charte des Nations Unies, i.e. la Cour d'ICJ des Nations Unies. Les Moors doivent comprendre, c'est politique. C'est un jeu de cartes en cinq dimensions. Tout d'abord, nous devons commencer à se déplacer en pièces. Utilisons nos biens de toutes les choses que nous avons accédé à. Nous commençons à se déplacer en pièces. Ce sont tous les traités, conventions, déclarations, Charte des Nations Unies, Charte des Nations Unies, etc. C'est tout ce que c'est. Ce sont des pièces que vous bouvez et que vous combattez. Mais nous ne pouvons même pas jouer de cartes. Car nous n'avons même pas de carte de jeu. Donc, une fois que nous utilisons l'État, nous pouvons amener notre dispute à l'ICJ. Et confiez-moi quand je vous le dis. Quand l'ICJ découvre que l'un de ses nombreux États, les États-Unis et les États-Unis d'Amérique, deux entités séparées, est enfreint par le Cour d'administration parce que le Cour d'administration suit la diplomatie des traités et essaye de maintenir la paix et l'égalité, quand l'ICJ découvre que l'égalité n'est pas maintenue par les États-Unis, que les États-Unis enfreignent les juges du Cour d'administration, les États-Unis d'Amérique ne vont pas obtenir de favorité en rien, parce que l'ICJ ne joue pas ça. Gardez à l'esprit, Moors, les États-Unis d'Amérique sont la dernière puissance chrétienne qui prétend une jurisdiction privée en Maroc. N'est-ce pas ce que l'ICJ a dit, France contre les États-Unis d'Amérique? Les États-Unis d'Amérique sont la dernière puissance chrétienne prétendant une jurisdiction privée en Maroc. Elles sont les dernières. Et l'ICJ a déjà dit aux États-Unis d'Amérique, France contre les États-Unis d'Amérique, en 1952. La seule raison pour laquelle vous êtes en train de les voir, c'est parce que les Moors vous permettent, parce que les Moors ont vérifié ces boîtes. L'ICJ les a déjà dit. Une fois que ces Moors vérifient ces boîtes, les États-Unis d'Amérique, vous allez devoir respecter. À qui? Au Cour d'administration. S'ils ne respectent pas les ordres du Cour d'administration, alors les Moors vont avoir à amener un référé appelé l'ICJ. C'est la vérité. Et c'est une probabilité élevée, Moors, que les États-Unis d'Amérique et ses nombreux États continuent d'enfreindre le Cour d'administration même lorsque nous avons notre statut approprié. Juste comprendrez ça. Pourquoi je montre à l'ICJ? Car il y a une probabilité élevée que c'est là que les Moors-États vont finir. Continuons. Ok, Moors, le prochain vidéo que je veux vous montrer est un peu plus sur le Juge Youssef. Y U S U F, Juge Youssef. Il va parler un peu plus sur l'ICJ. Je dois vraiment que les Moors aient écouté ce qu'il dit. En fait, je dois, surtout les jeunes Moors, aller voir ses vidéos YouTube. Juste Google, vous savez, Juge Youssef, ICJ, vous verrez beaucoup de vidéos. Écoutez ses présentations. Écoutez ses workshops. Apercelez-vous de ce qu'il dit. Ok? Studiez-le. Comment peuvent les Moors avoir le Cour d'administration et les juges si nous ne étudions pas les juges? C'est juste le sens commun, non? Studiez le Juge Youssef. Ok, allons dans le prochain vidéo. Ok, le nom de cette vidéo est Statement par H. E. Abdouaoue Kwey, Ahmed Youssef, président de l'ICJ et de la commémoration de la 75e. Alright? Un peu huit minutes longue. Allons-y. Oh, avant de commencer. Le Juge Youssef est de Somalia. Donc il a un accent. Donc vous entendez lui dire "status", "status". C'est là qu'il dit "states". Donc quand on entend "status", juste comprendre qu'il dit "states", parce que "states" est la parole la plus importante à dire. Comme vous avez vu dans le précédent vidéo, tout ce qu'il parlait était "states". Donc quand le Juge Youssef dit "states", vous savez ce qu'il dit, alright? Allons-y.
La résolution de l'Assemblée générale 73-299, et la décision 75-503 de 18 septembre 2020. Je invite maintenant l'Assemblée à voir le déclaration préregistrée de son Excellence, Abdouaoue Ahmed Youssef, président du Court international de justice.
Monsieur le Président de l'Assemblée générale, Monsieur le Secrétaire général, Excellences, ladies and gentlemen. Avec l'établissement des Nations Unies en 1945, une décision a été prise par les États qui participaient à la Conférence de San Francisco pour remplacer le règne de force par le règne de la loi. Cette décision a fait toute la différence pour l'humanité dans les 75 dernières années. Pour des milliards de personnes sur cette planète qui dépendent de la règle internationale de la loi, l'application du principe des droits égaux et de la détermination de la peuple, la prohibition de l'utilisation d'armes entre les États, et la protection des droits humains a fait de la liberté, de l'indépendance, du progrès et de la paix dans les 75 dernières années. Tout cela est remercié par l'établissement des Nations Unies. Cela nous donne tous un cause de célébration aujourd'hui de 75 ans de cette institution unique. Comme président du Court international de justice, il me convient de dire quelques mots sur la règle internationale de la loi. Il est parfois facile de prendre pour donné l'existence de la règle internationale de la loi ou de oublier sa significance, non seulement pour la paix, mais aussi pour le progrès et la prospérité de toutes les nations. Aucun État, peu importe quel peut être, ne peut fournir de sécurité, de prospérité et d'environnement propre à ses peuples sans coopérer avec d'autres États. Ni tous les problèmes d'une nation peuvent être résolus à un niveau national. La coopération internationale doit être basée sur un système de règles. Sauf si ce système de règles est respecté par chaque État, les édithes de la coopération multilatérale peuvent s'effondrer. Ainsi bien que l'un d'États peut vouloir être libre des obligations légales liées à d'autres États, il ne peut pas le faire unilatéralement sans perdre les bénéfices qu'il y a de sa coopération avec ces États et avec d'autres. Donc, les États ne sont pas seulement rapprochés par les relations diplomatiques, le commerce et les avancées technologiques dans la transportation, les télécommunications et le cypher espace. Ils sont aussi rapprochés par la web de règles qui rend possible cette interaction. Une web de règles inspirée et basée sur les principes fondamentaux de la Charte des Nations Unies et de la loi internationale. Ces règles ne sont pas imposées sur les États par un législateur externe. Elles sont designées et assenties par les États eux-mêmes. Elles sont souvent basées sur les intérêts mutuels et sur les valeurs partagées. Une règle internationale de la loi ne peut, cependant, exister sans un organisme judiciaire auquel les disputes peuvent être réparés et par lequel elles peuvent être résolues. C'est pour ce but que les drapeurs de la Charte des Nations Unies ont établi le Court international de justice. C'était en réponse à la détermination proclamée dans le preamble de la Charte pour établir les conditions sous lesquelles la justice et le respect des obligations qui apparaissent des traités et d'autres sources de la loi internationale peuvent être maintenues. C'était aussi en fédération du principe de la Charte que tous les membres devront résoudre leurs disputes internationales par des moyens pacifiques de telle sorte que la paix internationale et la sécurité et la justice ne soient pas en danger. Le statut de la Cour, qui est basé sur celui de la Cour permanente de justice internationale, adopté il y a presque 100 ans, le 13 décembre 1920, était attaché à la Charte des Nations Unies comme une partie intégrale de celle-ci. C'est une indication claire de l'importance de la Cour dans l'architecture de la règle de la loi des Nations Unies, de laquelle elle est l'organisme judiciaire principal. Dans les 75 dernières années, la Cour a assumé avec fi son rôle comme gardien de la règle de la loi à un niveau international. Elle ne pourrait pas l'avoir fait sans le respect de ses décisions exigées selon l'article 94 de la Charte des Nations Unies. Cet article fournit que chaque membre des Nations Unies assume à respecter la décision du Court international de justice dans tout cas de l'État. La qualité du travail de la Cour a aussi permis à elle d'acquérir une confiance croissante entre les États pour confier à elle la résolution de leurs disputes. Cela a conduit, dans les dernières années, à un heavy workload devant elle, de sorte que le nombre de cas soumis à elle dans les 25 dernières années a en fait augmenté à la même niveau que ceux qui l'ont appelé dans ses 50 premières années d'existence. Monsieur le Président, l'augmentation de la reliance sur la règle de la loi dans les relations internationales, en opposition à la puissance arbitraire, et le résoudre par des moyens pacifiques à part par force, sont les plus grandes histoires de succès des Nations Unies. Nous pouvons espérer une guerre plus pacifique et stable tant que les relations entre les États sont menées dans le respect des principes fondamentaux de la Charte des Nations Unies et des obligations qu'elles ont assumées de leur propre volonté. Le Court international de justice est prêt à continuer son contribution dans les limites de son statut pour la protection et l'avancement de la règle internationale de la loi et pour le résoudre de disputes entre les nations. Je vous remercie pour votre attention.
Je remercie le président de l'...
Alright. Donc, qu'avons-nous appris du Juge Youssef? Tout ce qu'il a parlé était de la loi internationale et de suivre les règles. Il vous laisse savoir, amenez votre statut de dispute à l'ICJ parce que l'ICJ va jouer selon les règles. Ça doit être compris, Moors. Mais devinez quoi? Les Moors jouent selon les règles? Si vous ne vérifiez pas ces boîtes, vous ne jouez pas selon les règles. Comment espère-t-on que les États-Unis d'Amérique jouent selon les règles quand les Moors ne jouent pas selon les règles? Maintenant, les Moors reviennent à la compréhension de l'État et laisser partir ce vieux paradigme d'essayer seulement d'appliquer l'empire. Vous devez appliquer l'État-empire. Le Juge Youssef parle de l'État-empire parce que les nations du monde entière ne parlent pas de l'Estate ou de l'empire, les Moors. Ils parlent de quoi? États. Les Moors sont tous ici, parlent de ça. Nous devons augmenter notre niveau de degré et nous donner la meilleure chance de gagner. Qu'est-ce que je veux dire quand je dis "gagner"? Pour devenir la compétitive autorité pour appliquer notre constitution, appliquer nos traités et revenir dans le commerce, amitié et commerce avec le monde. Et quand nous avons des disputes avec d'autres États, diversité d'États, amenez notre dispute à l'ICJ si, en fait, le Cour d'administration ne previent pas. Qu'est-ce que je veux dire quand "si le Cour d'administration ne previent pas"? Ça signifie que nous sommes toujours usurpés par l'usage d'armes, qui ne violent pas seulement nos droits d'État, mais aussi les droits humains. Nous allons commencer à apprendre ce qu'on appelle l'erga omnis plus tard dans le long. Mais pour le moment, nous devons apprendre ce qu'on appelle just cogits. Just cogit est ce que les Moors doivent d'abord étudier, qui est les droits d'État. Plus tard dans le long, nous allons entrer dans ce qu'on appelle l'erga omnis, qui est les droits des peuples indigènes sous la consanguinité. Nous parlerons de ça un autre jour. Mais pour le moment, les Moors doivent arrêter de parler d'État-empire, commencer à parler d'État-empire. Donc ma question aux Moors est la suivante: quel est le nom de votre gouvernement provincial? Ça doit être compris, Moors. Car si vous pouvez me dire le nom de votre gouvernement provincial, alors vous pouvez me dire votre constitution. Vous pouvez me dire, alors je peux lire votre constitution et vous me dire vos trois branches du gouvernement et le limite de chaque officier qui n'est pas personnel. Je peux aller voir votre inauguration publique. Ça me dit beaucoup plus sur votre flèche d'État. Je peux voir ça. Les États voient, je peux le voir. Je ne peux pas voir vos élitons, mais j'ai vu que vous prenez votre ophre devant le monde dans votre vidéo d'inauguration publique. Puis, je sais déjà à travers votre site d'aller voir votre loi publique et voir que vous avez accédé à des traités, conventions, déclarations, la Charte des Nations Unies, etc., etc., etc. Je ne dois pas vous demander si vous vérifiez les boîtes parce que je peux voir que vous vérifiez les boîtes parce que je peux regarder votre record de loi publique. Et les collègues savent que les Moors ont retardé leur propre justice parce que les Moors n'ont pas vérifié ces boîtes. Une fois que vous vérifiez ces boîtes, devinez quoi? Maintenant, vous pouvez amener votre dispute au Cour d'administration et si le Cour d'administration ne previent pas, vous l'amenez à l'ICJ. Mais l'ICJ va vous poser des questions? Vous avez vérifié ces boîtes? Et si vous avez vérifié ces boîtes, Moors, avez-vous utilisé la diplomatie du Cour d'administration? Et vous allez dire oui, 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 et oui, et oui, et oui, et oui. Et l'ICJ va prendre ce cas. Et ils ne vont pas regarder aucun État, spécialement les États-Unis d'Amérique, qui est la dernière puissante État portant une jurisdiction privée en Maroc, si, en fait, les États-Unis d'Amérique et les États-Unis et ses nombreux États continuent d'appliquer une jurisdiction extraterritoriale. are still trying to enforce extraterritorial jurisdiction over a sovereign Moorish state that has checked the boxes. That's true. Okay, Moors. The name of this next video is this. The International Court of Justice ICJ delivers its order in the case of Iran versus United States of America. This video is fifty minutes long, fifty minutes. What does that mean? Moors, if you don't have discipline and patience to study international law, to study what happens at the ICJ, that means you're not serious about statehood. In order to understand ICJ, you got to be able to understand what's happening with your three branches of government. We're studying counsel court right now. Moors don't know nothing about counsel court, we have to study counsel court. Let's study what counsel court looks like from your advantage point once you have counsel court, because that's what it's going to look like when you bring the United States and its several states into your courtroom. So let's get an understanding. What is my biggest point here? Iran can't stand the United States of America. Did Iran get some bombs and tanks and come over the United States of America and just start a war? No, you know what they did? They picked up a pen. They started enforcing treaties based upon their statehood. Iran first established their first constitution, their statehood, in nineteen oh six. At that time, they just called themselves the Persians. They came out with their second constitution in nineteen seventy-nine and opened up what's called the Republic of Iran. But their nationality is really Persian, they'll tell you that. Iran is a political jurisdiction latitude longitude. But they'll tell you in a minute, they got several ethnicities there, but they're still Persians, they'll tell you that. But they're playing a political game. So they got a constitution in state nineteen seventy-nine, but they had a constitution nineteen oh six as well. Go back and do the research. So why am I showing you this? Iran said, I'm not playing with the United States of America. Iran said, we checked all these boxes. The United States of America, y'all checked all these boxes. Now how do we move forward? Now you got to move the pieces exercising what? You enforcing what? Strict liability of contracts. What's the contract? Here's the contracts. Treaties, conventions, declaration, United Nations Charter, et cetera. So Iran said, I'm not talking to Moore, United States of America. I'm going to take you to court and sue you and enforce these contracts. So if you look at ADPAC's website, it says what? A session to contract, these are contracts, Moors. That's to show you how what Iran did, okay? So Moors who don't want to watch this for fifty minutes, you don't have to. Go and watch the video on YouTube. But I highly recommend just watch it now, at least get a basic understanding because you should watch this video about three or four times to get an understanding because first you get an understanding. You watch it again, you get overstanding. You watch it a third time, you might get an inner standing because every time you watch a video, you're going to learn something else. That's how some discipline, Moors, let's get started. So for the purpose of context, Iran won this case. Moors will win as well. What I really want y'all to listen to is what is Judge Youssef saying about the treaties based upon obligations and diplomas and human rights, et cetera? Listen to what he's saying or how they came up with their judgment against the United States of America. Y'all listen, I know y'all hear it, but are you listening?
The sitting is open. The Court meets today to deliberate its decision on the request for the indication of provisional measures submitted by the Islamic Republic of Iran in the case concerning alleged violations of the nineteen fifty-five Treaty of Amity, Economic Relations, and Consular Rights.
That's United States of America's representatives. They're also going to show you Iran's representatives, but I just want to show you. See right here, that's in French. They also have another placard that's in English to say United States of America. You'll see that later on, but I want the Moors to understand really quickly. That's what's a placard that says United States of America, but this is United States representatives, okay?
Islamic Republic of Iran versus United States of America. I would recall that on sixteen July twenty eighteen, the Islamic Republic of Iran filed in the registry of the Court an application instituting proceedings against the United States with regard to alleged violations of the Treaty of Amity, Economic Relations, and Consular Rights between Iran and the United States of America, which was signed at Tehran on fifteen August nineteen fifty-five and entered into force on sixteen June nineteen fifty-seven. I will refer to this treaty as the Treaty of Amity or the nineteen fifty-five treaty. On the same day, Iran submitted a request for the indication of provisional measures referring to Article forty-one of the statute and to Article seventy-three, seventy-four, and seventy-five of the Rules of Court, aiming at safeguarding the rights, it claims, under the Treaty of Amity, pending the Court's final decision in the case. In accordance with the usual practice, I shall not read the introductory paragraphs of the order which set out the procedural history of the case. I shall also omit or summarize some other paragraphs. I shall accordingly begin the reading of the order at paragraph sixteen. The first section of the order briefly sets out the factual background to the case. Starting in two thousand six, the Security Council of the United Nations adopted a number of resolutions following reports by the International Atomic Energy Agency, which were critical of Iran's compliance with its obligations under the Treaty on the Nonproliferation of Nuclear Weapons, calling upon Iran to cease some of its nuclear activities. The Security Council also imposed sanctions in order to ensure compliance. Various states imposed additional sanctions on Iran. On fourteen July twenty fifteen, China, France, Germany, the Russian Federation, the United Kingdom, and the United States, together with the High Representative of the European Union for Foreign Affairs and Security Policy and the Islamic Republic of Iran, adopted a long-term comprehensive plan of action, which I shall refer to as the JCPOA or the plan concerning the nuclear program of Iran. The declared purpose of that plan was to ensure the exclusively peaceful nature of Iran's nuclear program and to produce, I quote, "the comprehensive lifting of all UN Security Council sanctions as well as multilateral and national sanctions related to Iran's nuclear program," end of quotation. On twenty July twenty fifteen, the Security Council of the United Nations adopted Resolution twenty-two thirty-one two thousand fifteen endorsing the JCPOA. On eight May twenty eighteen, the President of the United States issued a National Security Presidential Memorandum announcing the end of the participation of the United States in the JCPOA and directing the reimposition of sanctions lifted or waived in connection with the JCPOA. The Presidential Memorandum determined that it was in the national interest of the United States to reimpose sanctions, I quote, as expeditiously as possible and in no case later than one hundred eighty days, end of quotation, from the date of the memorandum. Simultaneously, the United States Department of the Treasury, Office of Foreign Assets Control, announced that sanctions would be re-imposed in two steps. The United States would reimpose a certain number of sanctions upon expiry of a first wind-down period of ninety days ending on six August twenty eighteen and following a second wind-down period of one hundred eighty days ending on four November two thousand eighteen. The United States would reimpose additional sanctions. On six August twenty eighteen, the President of the United States issued Executive Order one-three-eight-four-six, reimposing certain sanctions on Iran and Iranian nationalists. Turning to the question of primafacie jurisdiction, the Court recalls that it may indicate provisional measures only if the provision is relied on by the applicant appear primafacie to afford a basis on which its jurisdiction could be founded, but that it need not satisfy itself in a definitive manner that it has jurisdiction as regards the merits of the case. In the present case, Iran seeks to found the jurisdiction of the Court on Article thirty-six, Paragraph one of the Statute of the Court and on Article twenty-one, Paragraph two of the Treaty of Amity. The Court must first determine whether it has primafacie jurisdiction to rule on the merits of the case, enabling it if the other necessary conditions are fulfilled to indicate provisional measures. Article twenty-one, Paragraph two of the nineteen fifty-five treaty provides that, and I quote, "Any dispute between the high contracting parties as to the interpretation or application of the present treaty not satisfactorily adjusted by diplomacy shall be submitted to the International Court of Justice unless the high contracting parties agree to settlement by some other pacific means," end of quotation. The Court must therefore verify primafacie two different requirements, namely that there exists a dispute between the parties and that this dispute concerns the interpretation or application of the nineteen fifty-five treaty. As the Court has repeatedly noted, a dispute between states existed where they hold clearly opposite views concerning the question of the performance or non-performance of certain international obligations. The claim of one party must be positively opposed by the other. The Court observes that in the present case, the parties do not contest that a dispute existed between them. They differ, however, on the question whether this dispute related to the interpretation or application of the nineteen fifty-five treaty. In order to determine whether the dispute between the parties concerns the interpretation or application of the nineteen fifty-five treaty, the Court cannot limit itself to noting that one of the parties maintains that the treaty applies while the other denies. Rather, it must ascertain whether the act is complained of by the applicant are primafacie capable of falling within the provisions of that instrument and whether, as a consequence, the dispute is one which the Court could have jurisdiction, ratione materie, to entertain. The Court considers that the fact that the dispute between the parties arose in connection with and in the context of the decision of the United States to withdraw from the JCPOA does not in an obitist sense exclude the possibility that the dispute relates to the interpretation or application of the Treaty of Amity. In general terms, certain acts may fall within the ambit of more than one legal instrument and a dispute relating to those acts may relate to the interpretation or application of more than one treaty or other instrument. To the extent that the measures adopted by the United States following its decision to withdraw from the JCPOA might constitute violations of certain obligations under the nineteen fifty-five treaty, such measures relate to the interpretation or application of that instrument. The Court also observes that the JCPOA does not grant exclusive competence to the dispute settlement mechanism it establishes with respect to measures adopted in its context and which may fall under the jurisdiction of another dispute settlement mechanism. Therefore, the Court considers that the JCPOA and its dispute settlement mechanism do not remove the measures complained of from the material scope of the Treaty of Amity nor exclude the applicability of its compromise clause. The Court also noticed that while Iran contested the conformity of the measures adopted with several provisions of the nineteen fifty-five treaty, the United States expressly relies on Article twenty, Paragraph one of that treaty, which defines a limited number of instances in which, notwithstanding the provisions of the treaty, the parties may apply certain measures. Whether and to what extent those exceptions have lawfully been relied on by the respondent in the present case is a matter which is subject to judicial examination and hence forms an integral part of the material scope of the Court's jurisdiction as to the interpretation or application of the treaty under Article twenty-one, Paragraph two. The Court considers that the nineteen fifty-five treaty contains rules providing for freedom of trade and commerce between the United States and Iran, including specific rules prohibiting restrictions on the import and export of products originating from the two countries as well as rules relating to the payment and transfer of funds between them. In the Court's view, measures adopted by the United States, for example, the revocation of licenses and authorizations granted for certain commercial transactions between Iran and the United States, the ban on trade of certain items and limitations to financial activities might be regarded as relating to certain rights and obligations of the parties to that treaty. The Court is therefore satisfied that at least there are four mentioned measures which were complained of by Iran are indeed primafacie capable of falling within the material scope of the nineteen fifty-five treaty. The Court finds that the above-mentioned elements are sufficient at this stage to establish that the dispute between the parties relates to the interpretation or application of the Treaty of Amity. The Court recalls next that under the terms of Article twenty-one, Paragraph two of the nineteen fifty-five treaty, the dispute submitted to it must not have been, I quote, "satisfactorily adjusted by-- and I quote, "satisfactorily adjusted by diplomacy." In addition, Article twenty-one, paragraph two states that "Any dispute relating to the interpretation or application of the treaty shall be submitted to the Court, unless the parties agree to settlement by some other pacific means." The Court notes that neither party contends that they have agreed to settlement by any other peaceful means. The Court recalls that Article twenty-one, paragraph two of the nineteen fifty-five treaty is not phrased in terms similar to those used in certain compromiser clauses of other treaties, which for instance impose a legal obligation to negotiate prior to the decision of the Court. Instead, the terms of Article twenty-one, paragraph two of the nineteen fifty-five treaty are descriptive in character and focus on the fact that the dispute must not have been satisfactorily adjusted by diplomacy. Thus, there is no need for the Court to examine whether formal negotiations have been engaged in or whether the lack of diplomatic adjustment is due to the conduct of one party or the other. It is sufficient for the Court to satisfy itself that the dispute was not satisfactorily adjusted by diplomacy before being submitted to it. In that connection, the Court refers to two diplomatic notices sent in June, twenty eighteen by the government of Iran to the Embassy of Switzerland for an interest section in Tehran, which serves as the channel of communication between the governments of the parties, in the latter of which express mention was made of the obligations of the United States under the nineteen fifty-five treaty. The Court observes that these two notices did not prompt any response from the United States and that there is no evidence in the case file of any direct exchange on this matter between the parties. As a consequence, the Court notes that the dispute had not been satisfactorily adjusted by diplomacy within the meaning of Article twenty-one, paragraph two of the nineteen fifty-five treaty prior to the filing of the application on sixteen July, twenty eighteen. In light of the foregoing, the Court concludes that primafacie it has jurisdiction pursuant to Article twenty-one, paragraph two of the nineteen fifty-five treaty to deal with the case to the extent that the dispute between the parties relates to the interpretation or application of the same treaty. The power of the Court to indicate provisional measures under Article forty-one of the Statute has as its object the preservation of the respective rights of the parties in a given case pending its final decision. It follows that the Court must be concerned to preserve by such measures the rights which may subsequently be adjudged by it to belong to either party. Therefore, the Court may exercise this power only if it is satisfied that the rights asserted by the party requesting such measures are at least plausible. At this stage of the proceedings, the Court does not call it upon to determine definitively whether the rights which Iran wishes to see preserved exist. It need only decide whether the rights claimed by Iran on the merits and which it is seeking to preserve pending the final decision of the Court are plausible. Moreover, a link must exist between the rights whose protection is sought and the provisional measures being requested. The Court observes at the outset that the claims set out in the application of Iran make reference solely to the alleged violations of the fifty-five treaty. They do not refer to any provisions of the JCPOA. Under the provisions of the nineteen fifty-five treaty invoked by Iran, both contracting parties enjoy a number of rights with regard to financial transactions, the import and export of products to and from each other's territory, the treatment of nationals and companies of the parties, and more generally, freedom of commerce and navigation. The Court further notes that the United States does not, as such, contest that Iran holds these rights under the nineteen fifty-five treaty or that the measures adopted are capable of affecting these rights. Instead, the United States claims that Article twenty, paragraph one of the nineteen fifty-five treaty entitles it to apply certain measures inter alia to protect its essential security interests and argues that the possibility of the alleged rights of Iran must be assessed in light of the possibility of the rights of the United States. The Court notes that the rights whose preservation is sought by Iran appear to be based on a possible interpretation of the nineteen fifty-five treaty and on the primafacie evidence of the relevant facts. Further, in the Court's view, some of the measures announced on eighth May, twenty eighteen and partly implemented by Executive Order thirteen eight four six of six August, twenty eighteen, such as the revocation of licenses granted for the import of products from Iran, the limitation of financial transactions and the prohibition of commercial activities appear to be capable of affecting some of the rights invoked by Iran under certain provisions of the nineteen fifty-five treaty. However, in assessing the possibility of the rights asserted by Iran under the nineteen fifty-five treaty, the Court must also take into account the invocation by the United States of Article twenty, paragraph one, subparagraphes B and G of the treaty. The Court need not carry out at this stage of the proceedings a full assessment of the respective rights of the parties under the nineteen fifty-five treaty. However, the Court considers that in so far as the measures complaining of by Iran could relate to fissionable material the radioactive byproducts thereof or the sources thereof which is provided for under subparagraph B or could be necessary to protect essential security interests of the United States under paragraph G, subparagraph G, the application of Article twenty, paragraph one might affect at least some of the rights invoked by Iran under the Treaty of Amity. Nonetheless, the Court is of the view that other rights asserted by Iran under the nineteen fifty-five treaty would not be so effective. In particular, Iran's rights relating to the importation and purchase of goods required for humanitarian needs and to the safety of civil aviation cannot plausibly be considered to give rise to the invocation of Article twenty, paragraph one, subparagraphes B or G. In light of the foregoing, the Court concludes that at the present stage of the proceedings, some of the rights asserted by Iran under the nineteen fifty-five treaty are plausible insofar as they relate to the importation and purchase of goods required for humanitarian needs, such as medicines and medical devices, foodstuffs and agricultural product commodities, as well as goods and services required for the safety of civil aviation, such as spare parts, equipment, and associated services, including warranty, maintenance, repair services, and safety-related inspections necessary for civil aircraft. The Court now turns to the issue of the link between the rights claimed and the provisional measures requested. The Court recalls that Iran has requested the suspension of the implementation and enforcement of all measures announced on eighth May, twenty eighteen and the full implementation of transactions already licensed. Iran has further requested the Court to order that the United States must, within three months, report on the action taken with regard to those measures and assure, and I quote, "Iranian, US, and non-US nationals and companies that it will comply with the order of the Court and that it shall cease any and all statements or actions that will dissuade US and non-US persons and entities from engaging or continuing to engage economically with Iran and Iranian nationals or companies." End of quotation. Finally, Iran requests that the United States must refrain from taking any other measure that might prejudice the rights of Iran and Iranian nationals under the nineteen fifty-five treaty. The Court has already found that at least some of the rights asserted by Iran under the nineteen fifty-five treaty are plausible. It recalls that this is the case with respect to the asserted rights of Iran insofar as they relate to the importation and purchase of goods required for humanitarian needs as well as goods and services required for the safety of civil aviation. In the view of the Court, certain aspects of the measures requested by Iran aimed at ensuring freedom of trade and commerce, particularly in the above-mentioned goods and services, may be considered to be linked to those plausible rights whose protection is being sought. The Court concludes, therefore, that a link exists between some of the rights whose protection is being sought and certain aspects of the provisional measures being requested by Iran. The Court now turns to the issue of the possible, of risk of irreparable prejudice and urgency. The Court pursuant to Article forty-one of its Statute has the power to indicate provisional measures when there is a risk that irreparable prejudice could be caused to rights which are the subject of judicial proceedings or when the alleged disregard of such rights may entail irreparable consequences. However, the power of the Court to indicate provisional measures will be exercised only if there is urgency in the sense that there is a real and imminent risk that irreparable prejudice will be causing before the Court gives its final decision. The condition of urgency is met when the act is susceptible of causing irreparable prejudice can occur at any moment before the Court makes a final decision on the case. The Court must therefore consider whether such a risk exists at this stage of the proceedings. The Court is not called upon for the purposes of its decision on the request for the indication of provisional measures to establish the existence of breaches of the Treaty of Amity, but to determine whether the circumstances require the indication of provisional measures for the protection of rights under this instrument. It cannot at this stage make definitive findings of fact and the right of each party to submit arguments in respect of the merits remains unaffected by the Court's decision on the request for the indication of provisional measure. The Court notes that the decision announced on eighth May, twenty eighteen appears to have already had an impact on the import and export of products originating from the two countries as well as on the payment and transfer of-
Okay, Mores, I have to switch out my recording device because the battery ran out. So we're picking up from here, all right? Okay.
...aviation have been prevented from doing so when it involved the installation or replacement of components produced under US licenses. Furthermore, the Court notes that while the importation of foodstuffs, medical supplies, and equipment is in principle exempted from the United States' measures, it appears to have become more difficult in practice since the announcement of the measures by the United States for Iran, Iranian companies, and nationals to obtain such imported foodstuffs, supplies, and equipment. In this regard, the Court observes that as a result of the measures, certain foreign banks have withdrawn from financing agreements or suspended cooperation with Iranian banks. Some of these banks also refuse to accept transfers or to provide corresponding services. It follows that it has become difficult, if not impossible, for Iran, Iranian companies, and nationals to engage in international financial transactions that would allow them to purchase items not covered in principle by the measures, such as foodstuffs, medical supplies, and medical equipment. The Court considers that certain rights of Iran under the nineteen fifty-five treaty invoked in this proceeding that it has found plausible are of such a nature that the disregard of them may entail irreparable consequences. This is the case in particular for those rights relating to the importation and purchase of goods required for humanitarian needs, such as medicines and medical devices, foodstuffs and agricultural commodities, as well as goods and services required for the safety of civil aviation, such as spare parts, equipment, and associated services necessary for civil aircraft. The Court is of the view that a prejudice can be considered as irreparable when the persons concerned are exposed to danger to health and life. In its opinion, the measures adopted by the United States have the potential to endanger civil aviation safety in Iran and the lives of its users to the extent that they prevent Iranian airlines from acquiring spare parts and other necessary equipment as well as from accessing associated services necessary for civil aircraft. The Court further considers that restrictions on the importation and purchase of goods required for humanitarian needs- required for humanitarian needs such as foodstuffs and medicines including lifesaving medicines, treatment for chronic disease, or preventive care, and medical equipment may have a serious detrimental impact on the health and lives of individuals on the territory of Iran. The Court notes that during the oral proceedings, the United States offered assurances that the United States Department of State would, I quote, "use its best endeavors to ensure that humanitarian or safety of flight-related concerns which arise following the reimposition of the United States sanctions receive full and expedited consideration by the Department of the Treasury or other relevant decision-making agencies," end of quotation. While appreciating these assurances, the Court considers nonetheless that insofar as they are limited to an expression of best endeavors and to cooperation between departments and other decision-making agencies, the safe assurances are not adequate to address fully the humanitarian and safety concerns raised by the applicant. Therefore, the Court is of the view that there remains a risk that the measures adopted by the United States as set out above may entail irreparable consequences. The Court further notes that the situation resulting from the measures adopted by the United States following the announcement of eight May two thousand and eighteen is ongoing and that there is at present little prospect of improvement. Moreover, the Court considers that there is urgency taken into account the imminent implementation by the United States of an additional set of measures scheduled for after four November two thousand and eighteen. The indication by the Court of provisional measures responding to humanitarian needs would not cause irreparable prejudice to any rights invoked by the United States. The Court concludes from all of the above considerations that the conditions required by its statute for it to indicate provisional measures are met. It is therefore necessary pending its final decision for the Court to indicate certain measures in order to protect the rights claimed by Iran as identified above. The Court recalls that it has the power under its statute when a request for provisional measures has been made to indicate measures that are in whole or in part other than those requested. Article seventy-five, Paragraph two of the Rules of Court specifically refers to this power of the Court. The Court has already exercised this power on several occasions in the past. In the present case, having examined the terms of the provisional measures requested by Iran and the circumstances of the case, the Court finds that the measures to be indicated need not be identical to those requested. The Court considers that the United States, in accordance with its obligations under the nineteen fifty-five treaty, must remove by means of its choosing any impediment arising from the measures announced on eight May two thousand and eighteen to the free exportation to the territory of Iran of goods required for humanitarian needs such as medicines and medical devices, foodstuffs and agricultural commodities, as well as goods and services required for the safety of civil aviation such as spare parts, equipment, and associated services necessary for civil aircraft. To this end, the United States must ensure that licenses and necessary authorizations are granted and that payments and other transfers of funds are not subject to any restriction insofar as they relate to the goods and services referred to above. The Court recalls that Iran has requested that it indicate measures aimed at ensuring the non-aggravation of the dispute with the United States. When indicating provisional measures for the purpose of preserving specific rights, the Court may also indicate provisional measures with a view to preventing the aggravation or extension of a dispute whenever it considers that the circumstances so required. In this case, having considered all the circumstances in addition to the specific measures it has decided to take, the Court deems it necessary to indicate an additional measure directed to both parties and aimed at ensuring the non-aggravation of their dispute. The Court reaffirms that its orders on provisional measures under Article forty-one of this statute have binding effect and thus create international legal obligations for any party to whom the provisional measures are addressed. The decision given in the present proceedings in no way prejudges the question of the jurisdiction of the Court to deal with the merits of the case or any questions relating to the admissibility of the application or to the merits themselves. It leaves unaffected the right of the government of the Islamic Republic of Iran and those of the United States of America to submit arguments in respect of those questions. For these reasons, the Court indicates the following provisional measures: One, unanimously: The United States of America, in accordance with its obligations under the nineteen fifty-five Treaty of Amity, economic relations and consular rights, shall remove by means of its choosing any impediment arising from the measures announced on eight May two thousand and eighteen to the free exportation to the territory of the Islamic Republic of Iran of medicines and medical devices, foodstuffs and agricultural commodities, and spare parts, equipment, and associated services, including warranty, maintenance, repair services, and inspections necessary for the safety of aviation. Two, unanimously: The United States of America shall ensure that licenses and necessary authorizations are granted and that payments and other transfer of funds are not subject to any restriction insofar as they relate to the goods and services referred to in point one. Three, unanimously: Both parties shall refrain from any action which might aggravate or extend the dispute before the Court or make it more difficult to resolve. I shall now call on the registrar to read the operative part of the order in French.
Vous avez la parole.
Merci, monsieur Petitard. Passez votre titre. La Cour indique à titre provisoire les mesures conservatoires suivantes: 1. À l'unanimité: Les États-Unis d'Amérique, conformément à leurs obligations au titre du traité d'amitié, de commerce et de droits consulaires conclus en mille-neuf-cent-cinquante-cinq, doivent, par les moyens de leur choix, supprimer tout entrave que les mesures annoncées le huit mai deux mille dix-huit mettent à la libre exportation vers le territoire de la République Islamique d'Iran: 1. De médicaments et de matériel médical; 2. De dents résinementaires et de produits agricoles; et 3. Des pièces détachées, des équipements et des services connexes, notamment le service après-vente, l'entretien, les réparations, les inspections nécessaires à la sécurité d'aviation civile. 2. À l'unanimité: Les États-Unis d'Amérique doivent veiller à ce que les permis et autorisations nécessaires soient accordées et à ce que les paiements et autres transferts de fonds ne soient soumis à aucune restriction dès lors qu'il s'agit de l'un des biens et services visés au point un. 3. À l'unanimité: Les deux parties doivent s'abstenir de tout acte qui risquerait d'aggraver ou d'étendre le différent dont la cour est saisie ou d'en rendre la solution plus difficile.
Merci. Judge Cansado Trinidad append a separate opinion to the order of the Court. Judge Adhok Montaz append a declaration to the order of the Court. The text of the order is available from today in Timescript. It will be available shortly on the Court's website. The printed text will be available in due course. As the Court has no further business before it today, I declare the sitting closed.
So what did we learn today? The only reason why Iran won is because of this. They followed the instructions. What were they doing? They were enforcing their land rights based upon their empire, which is their land too, longitude of their estate through their state of Iran. What did Iran do? They checked these boxes the same way the United States of America did, so they liked them. Iran said, "Okay, let's enforce the treaties." Iran didn't want to talk about that nuclear contract that Obama put together and Trump pulled out of. Iran said, "Okay, let's talk about the Treaty of nineteen fifty-five, Amity Treaty." It went back to the treaty. But how could Iran do it? They had to check these boxes first. Once they checked the boxes, they could now take it to the ICJ, and they won fair and square. Morse have to be competent. Morse have to act themselves. Since Morse been studying United States America Constitution, let me ask you this, Morse. You say enforce Article three. Section two says what? Diversity of state. Then where's your estate, Morse? I end with that: Islam.
Islam.